Good evening, welcome to the Needham Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is John Tancan, I'm the Chair. We have a short agenda for the evening. First on our agenda is the minutes of... The first thing on our agenda is the minutes from the February meeting. I'm getting a little feedback echo here, if we can work on that? Okay, good. Has everybody read the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I think we need to make an amendment, I think it's the January meeting minutes.
We didn't meet in February?
We did.
We did?
No, we did not.
No, I'm sorry, we did not.
We did not.
Good. Can I see your minutes? They're on the second page.
They're the January.
January 18th.
Good. That was, February was a good meeting. Right. This is a... Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 18th, 2024 meeting?
Zoom moved.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the minutes are accepted. First matter on our agenda for tonight is an application for Amit and Nita Levin-Schwarz at what number of Alderbrook Lane?
Twenty.
Twenty Alderbrook Lane. And they have applied for two applications this evening. The first is a special permit under Section 1.46 to allow the change, extension, alteration, enlargement, or lawful pre-existing non-conforming structure for a right setback from 9.6 feet to eight feet. The second application is for a variance under General Archup to 48, Section 10, and Section 7.5.3 of the bylaw to allow a front setback at 15.4 inches where 25 feet is required under the bylaw. And this is 20 Alderbrook Lane in Needham. So would you please introduce yourself for the record and who's speaking and who's who?
My name is Benny Bear, I'm an architect with a business address at 2001 Beacon Street in Bosom, Suite 211. With me here is Varda Cornolles, who is in charge of the design of this project, we're the architects for the project. And with us this evening too are the homeowners, Amit and Nita Schwartz.
Nice to meet you. So I don't know how much Daphne has spoken to you about your application. So there's two components. And before we get started and open up the public hearing, I just want to discuss something with you. So the variance that you're applying for is a very hard, difficult application. It's extraordinary standards, very limited. If we proceed with the variance tonight and it's approved, fantastic. If it's rejected, it's rejected and you're not coming back for a couple of years on that. So the special permit is a secondary issue. Special permit is less restrictive, less difficult to obtain. So the question for you, and I don't know if you've gone through it, is there a design for your project that would not require the variance? Because I've been on this board for close to 20 years. We've probably approved three or four variances in the town of Needham. The standard under Massachusetts law is very, very limited. And the concept of hardship isn't economic hardship. It's not some of the things that you've articulated. So I've spoken, we've spoken to town council. And before we start, do you want to proceed with the variance? Because if we open the hearing and have the hearing on the variance, we'll decide that tonight, either up or down. We're going to do that first, and then we're going to address the special permit. Caution is, if you get to the, if the variance is not approved, do you have modifications in your plan that would require an amendment of your special permit? Or is it worth withdrawing that and coming back with a revised plan? I bring this to your attention because we're all homeowners and residents in Needham. What you're trying to do, what you want to do, makes sense. The difficulty that you have is town meeting is our legislature, and it adopted a bylaw that says this is the zoning for the town. And what a variance does, ignore that, under these standards, we think you should vary that. It's very difficult to obtain, especially in the town of Needham. So I bring that to you, I'm willing to open up the public hearing if you want two minutes to talk about it, but I wanted to just discuss with you person to person straight out, and I consulted with council because you have two applications.
We are aware of the chances, and Daphne updated us, we read everything. And yeah, I don't think we can do anything else. So we would like to proceed.
Okay. So the second portion of that is, if the variance isn't approved, is there any modifications with your plan that you need to make at the special permit if you're not going to get the variance? Because that is a secondary application which would require modification, or not. If you're happy with it, you're not going to get the variance, the garage won't be permitted, are you happy with the other components that you're talking about under the special permit?
Well, the way I would look at it from my standpoint, and we've done both special permits and variances and other jurisdictions, so the... What's driving us to request the variance is the garage, the vehicular parking. If that is denied this evening, we don't have another design that's ready to present in its place. We would have to develop that other design.
So what I'm suggesting is, I'm going to open up the public hearing, we'll discuss it, and we'll take your application on a variance. We'll vote on that, and then we'll decide... I think town council indicated that they would have an ability to withdraw that or continue.
The variance?
No, the special permit, if the variance is not permitted.
Yes, they could withdraw the, they could withdraw the special permit and then go back and redesign and then reapply.
And if we went ahead with the special permit and approved the special permit, then they would have to come in and amend the special permit?
Correct.
A brand-new application, so.
Again, from my experience is, we have in the past, in other jurisdictions, occasions where we were granted some relief from the zoning and then for other reasons, we downsized the project.
Yep.
And we, in most cases, we did not have to go through the process again because we already had the, in this case, it would be the special permit, we're just doing less, we need less of it. So yes, yes.
So at this point, I'll open up the public hearing, and I'd like to hear your application on the variance. Why is the applicant, why are the applicants entitled to a variance under the general, the bylaw?
I take it that you've reviewed the application's material?
Everybody's reviewed the applications?
Yeah.
We, I have here in front of me a printout of the Section 10 of Chapter 48. What the state says that... I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an attorney, but my reading of this, there are three things that we need to meet. We need to demonstrate circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or the biography of the land.
Correct.
I believe we have that.
Let's hear about it.
Can I share the screen?
Yes, yeah.
Because I...
I think that promoted to you, or you declined to be promoted.
Hold on, I did not. I don't see how to, how to accept your offer to become a panelist. I don't see it.
Okay, so let me just go, okay, I'm going to promote you, promote to a panelist again. Making a co-host.
Okay.
And that takes a while, it should be...
Okay, I think this time it's working.
Rejoining, whether or not as a panelist. There you are.
Okay, so here we go.
Can I ask you a question before you?
Sure.
Is there, these plans we just are receiving for the first time now, is there a difference in the footprint between what you're showing here and what you showed before?
This is, what you see in front of you is a printout of the presentation, and for some reason...
No, my question is, we have a set of plans that was provided to us that were revised March 7th, that has within it a proposed footprint plan. Is it still the same in the new set?
The design has not changed.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the existing conditions of the house, you can see it from the front, the paving at the bottom of this image is Alderbrook Lane. And you can see that on the right, there's a car park, this is where the homeowners routinely park their cars. The reason is, the steps on the right of the house lead directly to their kitchen, it just makes sense. Technology is not cooperating with me. The, you know, what I'll do, I know what this presentation shows, so I'll just talk about this, and you can, you have it printed in front of you, so we...
She has it?
Varda, do you have it, do you want to share?
It's also here.
There's a...
I don't know why.
No, she would not have this that you just submitted, obviously. She has the plans that you filed before.
We were able to research a building permit dating back to 1951 that chose the lot with a different shape and different size from what it is today. Evidently, this structure had been moved to this location at some point of time, I don't know exactly where from, I think it's from the next door lot, but it may be from another place. Then the, there's a subdivision plan from around the same time, was recorded in 1952, February 13th, and it chose a slightly different size of lots, and very close to the same shape. Then in 1976...
Can I just ask you a question on the subdivision plan, so I'm missing your term? Which lot on the subdivision plan is the subject lot?
It's the one that's 25.
25?
Got it. And you can see that the lot at that time had a somewhat propositional shape, it had the chamfered corner at the upper left, but it was larger than it is today. Then in the, in the 1976 building permit plan, the lot has a different shape. Evidently, it was subdivided into two lots in 1976, I refer to them as Lot 47 and Lot 46. And it's, it's triangular in shape. In addition to that, and we have it on the right-hand image, and we're in proximity to riverfront, we are near bedded-in wetlands, and there is a water and sewer easement on this lot on the left side of the house, if you look at it from Alderbrook Lane. So on that left-hand side of the house, we're both already in nonconformance with the sideyard, but there's also a water and sewer easement there if we ever wanted to continue that nonconforming condition. The Needham Conservation Commission reviewed this, this project at their hearing a week ago, and they voted on it favorably. We have not seen the order of conditions, but we expect it any day. The, the next page, page six, shows on the left, the land surveyors' plan for the proposed addition, showing the dimensional requirements, the yards that we are requesting relief from. And this is the same drawing that was submitted with the application. On the right-hand side of this page, we have side-by-side the architectural site plans existing on the left and proposed on the right. The existing shows the existing footprint in bluish tint, and you can see the cars parked on the right-hand side of the house. And the proposed site plan shows the cars parked in an enclosed garage with a driveway pointed down the sheet towards Alderbrook Lane. And we're showing on the right, to the right of that garage, the area that currently is paved and being a driveway and the cars parked on it is being, the pavement removed and the area is replanted with native plants to help with runoff. I understand that this is not a zoning concern. On the next page, page seven, we show views of the model, the left-hand side, it's existing, top shows trees, the bottom turns off the trees for clarity. And on the right-hand side of the page, we show the proposed design, again, the top shows the trees and the bottom removes the trees. Next page, same thing, compares the existing to the proposed, existing on the left, trees on the top, no trees on the bottom, proposed on the right, trees, no trees. And the next page illustrates the existing conditions on the top and the proposed work on the bottom, showing the massing of the neighboring structures. As you can see here, again, the cars currently parked to the right of the house, and what we're proposing is to replan three-wild that area, which happens to be the closest to the wetlands and the riverfront. On the next page, page 10 of this document, we took the survey engineer's proposed plan on the left, and we illustrate with color coding. In yellow, we're showing the existing nonconforming sideyards. The orange triangle at the, near the top of the lot shows the extended nonconforming condition with the sideyard. And in red, we show the new nonconforming condition with respect to the front yard of the garage. To the right, we're showing the existing site plan prepared by Peter Nolan Survey, Land Surveyor. And we're showing in purple, an area where currently the homeowners of number 20 Alderbrook Lane, they drive over that even though this is on the abutters lot. So we have a functional encroachment condition here. It has not been an issue to date, but I would submit that this is a hardship to the homeowners. This, there's a, there's an uncertainty here going forward in the future. The current abutter may be friendly and may not care about this, but the future abutter may erect a fence there to prevent that from happening. So we'd like to correct this with the proposed work. So I think that this, this goes to the hardship standard of the state law. And the last thing that I will say, that we think that granting the relief, the variance that we require for this here tonight, does not present substantial detriment to the public good. And we, we don't think that it nullifies or substantially derogates from the intent of the zoning bylaw of the city of, the town of Needham. So this is our case for variance.
So let me ask you a couple of questions, and I'll ask the other members of the board if they have it. So is there a photograph, when I drove by and I didn't sort of glean this, what you call a functional encroachment area, do you have a photo of that area straight on from the driveway?
From the side driveway?
Yeah, yeah. Just want to see how they access that area and...
I may have.
You can see here that in order to, page six, and they are, because you can see that in order to access the parking, we need to go through that area. But again, it's not a photo, we'll search for a photo, but you can see that in order to access the parking, we need to go through the...
Don't have it, Tony.
Maybe this might be a little bit better.
This is better.
John, this was on, I don't know if I have.
So what's interesting is, I don't think the way, as it's laid out in the land court plan, parallels what's on the ground, especially after that turn.
This is...
Yeah, Nick has that picture, yeah, that's perfect right there.
Okay, yes, because this is what I took.
Peter, if you look at, we're on page seven of this memorandum. This is right up here.
As you can see the, how they hook into the neighborhood.
Page seven of the top picture.
Yep.
And if you look at the way, it's depicted in the 1950s plan, which is the original subdivision plan, which is page four.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, no, that's not a good one. It's actually better than the 1976 one. Like that way doesn't really run all the way up. The way stops and it becomes like more paved driveway in front of the abutters property. See this here?
Yep.
This is more like this one here.
Yeah, you can see it on page seven.
So instead of it coming straight up, which they were probably thinking at some point in time for more subdivision, it's kind of taking on its own life going that way.
So why don't you explain to me, why can't you relocate your driveway onto your property? If you had to? Why is that impossible? I'm not saying it's good or bad or inconvenient, whatever, it looks lousy, whatever, I'm just saying why can't it be done?
I don't think we said that it cannot be done.
Oh, I'm not saying that, I'm saying why can't, that's a quick question, can it be done?
It's possible. We, we're not, in all honesty, we're not proposing this project solely to correct that condition. What we're saying is that this project does that.
All right, so what I'm saying is, to get to the end, you're establishing this is the hardship.
Yes.
And I'm saying the hardship can be eliminated, although it's not as desirable as what you're requesting in your application. So if the hardship can be eliminated without varying the zoning bylaw, is it possible? If it's not possible, that's a different story perhaps. So I, that's the question. I'm not saying you should, I'm not saying you shouldn't, I'm asking the question. At this juncture, I just want to read into the record some comments so I don't forget those, because this is an interesting application. So the building inspector submitted his comments, and he has no objections to the proposal. The police department had no objections to the proposal. The fire department had no issues with the proposal. That's awkward stuff. The board of health has certain requirements on new construction, and they're required to hand, they reiterate that, those types of things. A abutter, Joseph Miguel Gornet Montana, I believe he is your backdoor neighbor, has no objection to your project. Everything looked good, he checked the materials, I believe. We have the conservation memorandum that they approve your plans, that an order of conditions is pending, so that's always positive. The planning board had no comment. So those are the comments that were submitted today. Is there anyone in the room or audience or on Zoom that have any comments on this, either for or against, that want to be heard?
We have one hand raised from, I'm going to go ahead and promote him as a panelist.
Mr. Lustig, do you have something to say?
I do. Let me, let me just enable my video, there we go. My name is Richard Lustig, I live at 34 Alderbrook Lane, I am the abutter in this case, whose property goes, the driveway that was discussed partly goes over. And I just want to say I'm fully in support of what the Schwartz's want to do. They've reviewed their plans with me in detail. They make a lot of sense to me, I think they're very thoughtful. And I think the net benefit will make the neighborhood a better place, a more attractive place to live, so, so we, we're very good, we're good with it as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the board have any specific questions on the application? And we're just talking about the variance right now. We've seen the application, the project looks lovely, and we'll get into the special permit and after that, no comments.
Is there a difference, is it on the private way compared to a public way?
I'm sorry?
Is there a difference about, that it's on the private way compared to a public way?
Well, you mean per set, per purposes? I think that they're both considered a street, but you can look at the definition of street. We just had this, that house looks like a college. That's a good, it's a good point.
Because the underlying fee...
Because the, the underlying fee...
Any public way or private way shown on a plan approved under the subdivision control law, which I think this is. So I don't, I don't know that it really matters where the fees are, whether it's a street easement or whatever.
And what is the required vote on a variance?
Point three, it's unanimous vote.
So, yeah, two things. First, um, eh, two more things. First, we'd like to say that the variance is from the front, but this front is actually, again, for me, it looks like the, the side of the court, because it faces no street. It faces the conservation area, the Alderbrook. So it doesn't interfere any neighbor, eh, anyone. Eh, and this is one thing I wanted to say. And another thing I wanted to say is that in the conservation committee, the, what the specialist said is that with this change, we are actually improving the situation of the conservation, because now the cars are not driving next to the conservation area. Eh, the, the, the smoke and the pollution from the car is not pointed into the, eh, into the, uh, conservation area. We're actually getting farther from there. So it also has a good impact on, on the environment and on the conservation. It's good for the neighbors and for the town of Needham.
So I think that meets one of the standards that we're looking to, that it's not negative. Uh, the issue that I see, and I don't know about my fellow members, is due to the unusual soil condition, shape or topography of the land or structure in question, one of those results in a substantial hardship and little enforcement. And what you've presented is the driveway and the access as being the hardship. And personally, I don't believe that meets the standard of a hardship. I'm willing to listen to my board members, and that was my concern from the beginning of it. And that's why I really wanted to focus on the hardship of it. Hardship doesn't mean lots of things. It's strictly, and that's the state law. Unusual soil condition, shape or topography of the land or structures in question. So that's just my concern, because I don't think, everything else that you're doing on the context of the special permit and working with the conservation commission and bettering the property and your abutters and your neighbors supporting it, what you wanna do, that was my concern when the application was filed and I read it. That's why I wanted to talk to you about that. So I'm all ears.
I just want to, uh, just go back and not let it, leave it hanging to your question about, uh, relocating the driveway. It's possible. It would involve removal of trees that we're not proposing. We're proposing to remove one tree, but there's another larger, uh, more substantial tree that we'd like to, uh, to preserve, that relocating the driver would, eh, would require...
I understand. So this desire, likes, wants, and what, what's beautiful for your house and what you want for your house, but what's possible. And, and, and in my experience, when you're faced with, you can't do anything versus you can do something, varying the zoning bylaw to allow that doesn't meet the standard. At one point in our, our statutes, it did. And I think it was in the 1980s before, when did the variance rules change?
Why are you looking at him and not me?
Because he was the zoning expert.
Oh, okay.
That was practice.
So anyway, uh, guys, your, your thoughts?
I mean...
Before we close the hearing.
I think the lot is certainly a unique shape. I mean, obviously you guys have a little more experience than I do, but I haven't seen many triangular lots.
We had one double.
Still unique, still unique. And I also think, from having driven down there, you know, I think we're talking about literal enforcement to a way that I don't think necessarily parallels what's on the ground. I mean, that road first off did not feel 15 feet wide to me, but that's number one. There's clearly some type of like a little turnaround at the end, because I used it when I drove down there. And that, the way as it's depicted here, they're doing all the calculations off of, just doesn't...
So aren't you saying that there is possibly an argument to be made, but I haven't heard it today? That's all I'm saying. I've said the driveway can't be met. You haven't met your standard. That's my black, black and white thing. Everything you're saying, maybe they have to do more research, maybe they have to, um, bring learned counsel. And I'm not saying you guys are not the right people to bring this, but, you know, that's not before us. That's your speculation.
I understand, but I would love to help any and all residents of this town as best as we possibly can. And especially when there's one direct abutter who's in support, you know, which is similar to the only other time in my tenure that we've granted a variance, where the direct abutter happened to be the same person.
The same people.
Same people.
The abutter agreed with themselves.
Yeah, but they're agreeing with themselves. So, you know...
So, so, so the point again, I'll just, before Peter has his, the variance is to be used infrequently on a presentation of those standards. If you think the applicant has made that finding and, and, and presented that case, that's fine. I think it has to be used sparsely. Peter?
It's a nice project. And I've also, you probably saw me backing down the street. I also went to look at it and, and I can't frankly think of a location where it would have less impact on anyone of this non-compliance than this particular location. There, I mean, there's not even a house across the street. And then your idiot abutter doesn't have a problem with it. The problem is that it's a very high standard under the law and under our bylaw. And I think that it's been determined in the courts that not being able to do what you want to do isn't a substantial hardship. I think here it's, it's very hard for me to find a way around that standard when you're living in the house. It's obviously not a hardship, living in the house as it's currently configured, because you've been living there for any number of years. So the fact that it's on an oddly shaped lot, uh, and that you have the water easement and things like that, all, all of that, they don't prevent the functional use of the house as a residence, uh, which is, is nowhere's near showing a case of substantial hardship. Frankly, I, I think you could probably realign the end of your driveway and take it off the abutters property, but since nobody cares right now, why bother doing that? There's no reason to fix a problem that no one's complaining about. So I, I don't see that frankly as a, as a hardship at all. I really would like to let the project go forward, but we've seen in the past that it's, it's a very incremental process. We, we, we make a decision in one case and, and then another case is brought before us, which is looking for slightly more, and that case is presented as a precedent. And it gets very, very hard once you start down that slope to stop. I think this is pretty clear. There's no substantial hardship. As much as I like the project, I think that it satisfies the other two criteria. So I'm, I'm having trouble finding a case for a variance. I don't think this is a good case to, to reach that result. And it, and I'm not happy about that frankly, and I'm sorry. What do you think?
I, I agree with you, and, um, that's really why I just wanted to focus on, on, on the hardship, because I didn't see it. I've, I've had projects and cases where people can't use their property. And the lot is completely useless because of the topography or the shape or how it's located. We had a case in here where the young family had, they needed a front foyer, and, and they couldn't get it. And the need for a front foyer was not a hardship. The need for something nicer, better is not a hardship. So I don't really know where you want to go with this. I'm, I'm going to close the hearing on the variance. Or I'm going to say, he, he, he raised some things that if you wanted to spend more time looking into it, what you presented to us today, I would not support a variance. And I think Peter has said the same thing.
No, you, you understand what he's saying.
Yeah, I, I think I understand, uh, what Mr. Dampkin's saying.
Oh, no, I meant Mr. Legores is saying. He's saying that it might be that the street as laid out is actually further away from the house.
Well, the only thing we have to go on...
I don't think that's the case from this plan.
The only thing we have to go on is a survey that's certified by land surveyor.
Right.
And, you know, so, uh, but beyond that, uh, the question I had, you know, to what you were talking about, do we have to request a continuation before you close the hearing if we want, uh...
I would, I would close the hearing. I would ask you if you would like a continuance until the next meeting. And have you come back with anything else you wanted to present on the focus of hardship? Because the project's been presented, the people have commented, your neighbors and abutters, we understand the benefits. What we don't see is the hardship in meeting the standard under the variance. So before I close the hearing, yes, I, I think if you wanna introduce something else, but I have to ask my colleagues if they're amenable to that, because that's where I was starting with the, that the hearing.
I'm not gonna be here next month.
Okay.
So I'm just saying you may want to build a team of voters.
If this is continued, does it have to be, I'm assuming it has to be heard by the same panel?
Uh, no, no. But I wouldn't wanna continue it too far out. You're away next month.
I don't see any reason to continue it, quite frankly. I, I, I mean, I, I think, I don't think there's gonna be a case for a variance, and I don't really wanna have them spend more time and money chasing it, and I don't frankly wanna spend more of our time sitting here listening.
Okay.
Because I, I don't think there's any scenario under which they...
I don't either, but I presented that in the beginning, and you have a special permit application we want to get to as well. So on that aspect, we could vote on the variance, close the public hearing, and if you wanted to withdraw the special permit to reconfigure whatever you want for your plans, you can do that as well. So we don't have to go ahead with the special permit tonight. I'll, I'll, I think I'd be willing to make a motion that you withdraw, withdraw without prejudice on the special permit, if you want to.
I don't see how we, we hear the special permit on the set of plans that requires a variance in order to bill.
Oh, that's why I said to withdraw without prejudice.
Right, yeah. Now, honestly, I don't even hear it. Yeah, okay.
I don't know what, yeah.
Well, so the special permit application is withdrawn without prejudice, but the, uh, variance is presumably being voted on.
We would vote on it tonight.
Right, right.
Can they elect to withdraw variance on it?
Not at this point, no. I brought that up in the beginning, and I think we have to decide that. And one, one member doesn't wanna continue it again. If you, what, what's your theory of continuing the variance for another month? And I wouldn't continue it for next month. I would want Peter to come back.
I understand that. The only theory is that, uh, we would, you know, seek some more, uh, legal advice on this before we conclude that it's a no-go.
I mean, the only thing I, I have to tell you is, is that, I, I think you made a reference before that it's not even the front of the yard or whatever, in, in... I would not recommend you pursue that argument.
No, I don't, we...
Had that case before.
We still have that case.
We still have that case, yeah. And then to us, it's a front yard.
No, eh, we, we...
It's strange.
Yeah, it is strange.
We have met with, uh, the building commissioner, uh, we've had similar projects in other jurisdictions. We're not contesting the determination that this is a front yard.
So, um, it's up to you if you want to support a continuance to the month of May.
I, I don't see any reason.
Okay.
I, I, I would think it's in their interest to figure out a way to do this.
Without a variance.
Without requiring a variance.
I understand. I just feel bad that they don't have counsel here if there's anything that we could be missing in any way, shape or form.
All right.
And if the time is on them.
I'm not trying to be heavy handed.
I understand. And I think your absence gives them a little more time to potentially seek learned counsel and see if there's any stone they can unturn.
Okay, so upon a request, if you would like a continuance, we would continue both hearings until our hearing in May, which is?
Your, the next meeting is April and May. I don't have, oh, wait, I can just look at it. One sec.
Sixteenth?
Yes, it's the sixteenth. In person here, right, I think?
Yes, it would be here in Charles River.
So, uh, I'd entertain a motion to continue this matter until May 16th at 7:30 PM.
I'll put a motion on the table to continue this matter until May 16th at 7:30 PM.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we don't, we talk with other people and if we don't find another, eh, another reasoning, what is the process? We just let you know that we are...
We would have a decision on the variance. We're gonna open up the hearing and have, uh, uh, since you presented it, and, and vote on the variance. And then if you wanted to withdraw the motion, the application for a special permit, we consider that without prejudice, so you can refile that. But on May 16th, we're gonna vote on the variance one way or the other. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say if, if it's helpful, we can vote on withdrawing the special permit without prejudice tonight. Save them sitting around two months waiting for us to do that in May so they can then come back again in June.
Well, the, the issue is that they come in with the variance, they may want the special permits, so...
I understand. I understand. But whatever, that's whatever they wanna do.
I'm sorry. No problem. Okay, okay. Uh, then, uh, we've, uh, eh, what we'd like to do is actually to not continue it, to, uh, get the vote on the variance tonight and the special permit.
Okay. You want to withdraw the special permit? Do you wanna...
Well, do you want to withdraw the special permit and, you know, make...
If we present the whole argument for a special permit and it's denied, then you're precluded from coming back for a special permit.
Yeah, so I think that the variance, eh, slight, small, small changes, eh, changes that will be approved based on this, this meeting. So maybe the right thing is to, you know, finish with a, understand that we will not get a variance. And for the special permit, we will need to come with new plans that you can approve, because I don't think you can approve a special permit for plans that don't get the... So it's anyhow, I think it's gonna be a waste of your and our time.
You'd withdraw and you're free to file whenever you want with a new application, but not the variance. Okay, so, uh, motion to continue withdrawn?
Motion to continue.
The, your motion to continue. We're gonna withdraw that motion?
I'm gonna put a mo, you want me to put a motion to continue to withdraw?
Withdraw the motion, yes.
I'll withdraw my motion to continue.
So then I would close the public hearing on the variance. And, uh, we will have deliberations. We've deliberated, I think. And I would like a motion, would someone make a motion on this?
On the motion of Amit Schwartz and, uh, I apologize. For a variance under MGL 40A, section 10 and section 7.5.3 of the zoning bylaw to allow a front setback at 15.4 inches where 25 feet are required, uh, the variance is denied.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's do a roll call. All in favor?
Of the denial.
Of the denial. Peter?
Yes.
Yes. The variance application is denied, 3-0. There has been a request for a withdrawal without prejudice of the application for the special permit. May I entertain a motion?
Removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
That the applicant's application for a special permit be withdrawn without prejudice. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Special permit withdrawn without prejudice. You can file.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. I'm so sorry.
We knew that it's a risk. Makes sense, but.
We just didn't want you shut out for the next couple of years and not being able to come back. Anything else on our agenda? Any signatures, any decisions?
No.
I entertain a motion to, yes.
Just that I won't be here for the next, uh, the first two weeks in, uh, April, but you have two cases and those are on, you know, moving through and hopefully we'll have them reviewed before I leave. So everything will be ready so that when I come back, your packets and everything.
Right. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bye, good night. All right. And let me just go ahead. Good night, Valentina.
Good night, Valentina.
Good night, Valentina.
And let's see.
Feel better.
Thank you.